Yeah, I figured.
We are running this down right now.
Good evening.
Can you hear us?
I can, yes.
Perfect. Excellent. Welcome.
Thanks. Sorry, I can't be there. I just want to be, make sure everyone's safe because my daughter was home with COVID over the weekend and I don't want to have any issues with near, near closeness to people and then have them come down with it and whatever.
Not a problem, not a problem. Alright, so I'm going to open the meeting. To, and I will entertain a motion to move into an executive session to which we will come back out of to do regular business.
So read the, make a motion to move into executive session.
I'll second.
And do you want to actually say what it's for?
Well, should we discuss strategy in respect to collective bargaining if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body in the chair sort of clause I A F I A F F woke 1947 firefighters and to consider the purchase exchange links to value of real property if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body two four six Paranoa Road.
Alright, David seconded. So, yeah, and all in favor, so Chris?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
I am, yes. Armin and Jeff are absent from this, so we will be going into on the meeting room. I will be assuming the chair duties as the clerk. And what we're going to do is we'll start with the pledge of allegiance. And then I will open the document script. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic, to the citizens, to the nation.
Invisible.
Alright. So, as a preliminary matter, this is select board clerk Justine St. John. Permit me to confirm all members in person anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members want to call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Krista Silva?
Yes.
Dave Gavin?
Yes.
Armin, dear Vicari?
Yes.
And I am present. And staff Greg?
Yes.
And Megan?
Yes.
You? So, good evening. This open meeting of the select board is being conducted both in person and via Zoom. Some speakers on the agenda will be participating remotely and we will allow for the public to provide comment via Zoom. The agenda posted on the town's website identifies how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that if you are participating remotely, other folks may be able to see you and that take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All the materials for this meeting, except for executive session materials, are available on board docs and recommend the members and the public follow the agenda as posted on board docs unless I note otherwise. Before we begin, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda after they conclude their remarks. I will go down the line of members inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. And further, if you're participating via Zoom, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. For all participants in person or remote, please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until I yield the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through myself taking care to identify yourself. For items with public comment, after the members have spoken, the chair will afford public comment as follows. The chair will ask members of the public who wish to speak to clearly state their name and address prior to making their comment. Public comments will be limited to three minutes each. Thank you very much, and let's turn to the first item on the agenda, which is public comments. Do we have any public comments this evening? Alright. Then we will continue on to item number four, which is use of town property. Greg, would you like to speak to this?
But I, I am expecting, oh Sheila, so Sheila McElroy, I'm saying that right, Sheila? So she was here representing the paper store, the paper store, they've done this a couple of times. They want to go around the downtown.
Yeah, you are. You're visible in the meeting too. I don't know why you're not facing meeting, not facing the camera, but in meeting visible.
Hello, everyone. I got the script. Very excited. Hi, David.
Hello.
Making sure you can hear us. All right, so it is seven o'clock and good evening, everyone. Jeff Swanberg, the chair, is unable to be in the meeting tonight, so I will be I will be assuming the chair duties as the clerk. And what we're going to do is we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And then I will open down the script. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the public, to the nation. All right. So as a preliminary matter, this is Select Board Clerk Justine St. John. Permit me to confirm all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members want to call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Krista Silva?
Yes.
Dave Gavin?
Yes.
Armand, dear Vicari?
Yes.
And I am present. And staff Greg?
Yes.
And Megan?
Yes.
You. So good evening. This open meeting of the Select Board is being conducted both in person and via Zoom. Some speakers on the agenda will be participating remotely and we will allow for the public to provide comment via Zoom. The agenda posted on the town's website identifies how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that if you are participating remotely, other folks may be able to see you and take and that take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All the materials for this meeting, except for executive session materials, are available on board docs. And recommend the members and the public follow the agenda as posted on board docs unless I note otherwise. Before we begin, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda after they conclude their remarks. I will go down the line of members inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. And further, if you're participating via Zoom, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. For all participants in person or remote, please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until I yield the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquially with other members, please do so through myself, taking care to identify yourself. For items with public comment, after the members have spoken, the chair will afford public comment as follows. The chair will ask members of the public who wish to speak to clearly state their name and address prior to making their comment. Public comments will be limited to three minutes each. Thank you very much, and let's turn to the first item on the agenda, which is public comments. Do we have any public comments this evening? All right. Then we will continue on to item number four, which is use of town property. Greg, would you like to speak to this?
But I am expecting, oh Sheila, so Sheila McElroy, I'm saying that right, Sheila? So she was here representing the paper store, the paper store. They've done this a couple of times. They want to go around the downtown area for photo shoot, for her call. But Sheila, could you introduce yourself and sort of clarify what your intentions are?
Hi. Yes, so we have a photo studio, the paper store does, down on Nathan Street in Maynard. So we just wanted to have, we have like three models and then maybe a crew of five people, so about 10 people total. We just wanted to get to take some pictures outside on the sidewalk and the streets around Nathan Street.
All right. Sheila, do you have, I know that there was an issue the last time you guys did this, that it rained. Do you have a rain date or do we need to make a contingency for that at all for you?
We don't have a rain date at the moment. Right now, the forecast, I'm keeping an eye on it right now, it looks like there's no rain right now, so crossing our fingers.
All right, sounds good. Anybody have a question?
My comment would be if there were to be a rain issue, could we, as part of our motion, give Greg the authority to approve a different date? Given that we are in agreement generally, the only thing would be if there was a conflict with some known public event. Otherwise, I don't think anybody would have an issue. But that's just my idea, so that they don't get stuck with, oh crap, you know, we have to wait for two weeks till the board meets again.
Right, no, good idea. All right, anybody else? All right, would someone like to make that motion with that motion?
Move to approve the use of Nathan, Summer, and Main Streets, as well as other town-owned property downtown on October 11th, 2022, from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM by the paper stores, in accordance with all federal, state, and local public health and safety guidelines, and to allow town administrator Greg Johnson to adjust the dates if weather becomes an issue.
Second.
All right. Any other further discussion? All in favor, David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
And I'm yes. Thank you. Thank you, Sheila.
Good luck and have fun.
Thank you.
Get some good shots of Maynard for the
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right.
Have the repeats.
No, I would agree. I wouldn't usually put that into the agenda, but we tried to get them approved a couple of weeks ago and then they missed. They missed the date.
Okay.
So. But now, I will probably do this.
All right. So next we have is becoming the season downtown, Mayor Business Alliance Holiday Sip and Stroll, December 3rd. Greg, you have?
Yeah, I am expecting Linda. Linda, do you want to tell us who you are?
Because we don't know.
Hi, I'm Linda Thayer, 14 Chandler Street, a member of the Maynard Business Alliance. Can you hear me okay? We're just, we're pleased to be planning at least the the holiday sip and stroll, which we haven't done since 2019. So this is the application to use town property as we've done in the past. Basically, just holding the park lighting ceremony, which includes the tree and the menorah, and then the sip and stroll itself on Nathan and Main Streets, which we do not shut down the streets, we do not block the sidewalks. Our goal is generally to drive, you know, draw people into the stores and so there shouldn't be any issues with the streets or anything like that. So I think most of you have been to it. Hopefully, you'll get there again this year, and we always coordinate with the police fire chief, VPW.
Great. Now, is that, correct me, and I'm not asking you, Linda, but is that the weekend of the?
The holiday parade is on Sunday. It's on the fourth.
All right, so it'll just be a holiday weekend.
That was the way that was originally scheduled to be, where there would be a sort of an event before the parade. That's the reason that weekend was always sip and stroll when it first came out, was scheduled for that weekend.
Right, and Jen Picarelli and I have been talking about this for months now. So she was, in fact, last year too, same thing, just trying to coordinate the two events on, you know, the way we had done in the past.
Great, all right.
So just to be, I'm sorry, just to be clear that the the time that's on here is not the time of the entire event. It's, that's including setup time in the park where the carols will be and hopefully WAVM will assist us with the audio equipment, just and so forth.
Yeah, so I have, does it look, it looks like the event itself is from 6:00 to 8:30. Does that sound right?
Yes.
Perfect. All right, anybody else have any questions or comments?
No. No, I'll make the motion.
All right.
Move to approve the use of Veterans Memorial Park in Summer, Nathan, and Main Street and other town-owned properties downtown for the Holiday Sip and Stroll on Saturday, December 3rd, 2022, from 4:30 PM to 8:30 PM in accordance with all federal, state, local, public health and safety guidelines.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, David?
Yes.
Yes. Armand?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Very good. Thank you, Linda.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for my tip.
All right, the next thing item on the agenda is a is a public hearing, which we cannot start until 7:15, so I'm going to propose we actually move down to item 11, which is correspondences. All right.
Move to accept and approve correspondence A through C, as shown.
Second.
Great. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. All right. We've got a few minutes as well. Do I have a motion?
Move to accept the minutes September 27th, 2022, as presented.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor? David?
Yes.
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 Armand?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Great. Greg?
Yes.
Do you want to do the town administrative report?
I will try.
All right. You have five minutes.
I will go quick. Thank you to the staff in particular, that's why I want to shout out for all your support on Maynard Fest. We had a really good turnout, even though it was cold and raining, especially at the beginning of the day. But I was thrilled to see at the end of Main Street, VPW was out there, fire departments out there, police departments out there, water guys, Julio.
Conservation.
Passing stuff out, trying to make people laugh. I was very, very proud because I hope the whole town was. Also, there was bright shiny new trucks that I don't know the, I went over the typical look at it. I tried to get my kid to be as excited about a back truck as that was, but it's hard because he had to pass the fire truck. But I was, I was, I was very impressed with the whole the Chamber of Commerce asked the Chamber of Commerce, they're pretty fantastic job. But I particularly, of course, want to emphasize how proud I am. So saying this to the EBITDA staff. Our chief assessor, Angie Merriman, hiring this Thursday. And it works good, of course, because she's been working for the town a long time, worked for towns before Maynard for a while. So it's well-enserved retirement, but it will be a loss, of course, to Maynard. We'll try to work with her to achieve the successful transition. But it's a significant change in town hall. Town offices will be closed on Monday for Indigenous Peoples' Day, so and I promoted Lori. Lori Ford is now the finance director. Or did already approved the reorganization of town staff to allow for the creation of the finance department. And as always, I encourage the public to look at the town administration reports that are both on board docs. I'm buying beautiful pictures put up every week. Really proud of the organization. It's catalog aging, I feel like, is always hidden down the park, so make sure, go to check it out. And that's all. Thank you so much, Mayor Chair, unless there's questions.
Any questions, comments?
I agree with you, Maynard Fest is really a good turnout.
Yes.
It was, it was, it was great, and it was, and it was really nice to see the town departments out there.
Yeah.
It really was.
Yeah, especially with their passion, nothing to hold you.
Yeah. Yeah, we have a lot of those.
All right. All right. See, and I'll just put this out real quick, because we have two more minutes, so I will just say that's also in under the correspondence for your town administrator report is that the cultural council is seeking is seeking funding proposals for grants, so if anybody has any ideas, they can submit. They can submit an application.
Yeah, thank you for mentioning that.
Absolutely. I know that there are a lot of great programs that have benefited from that, and I look forward to seeing what's next. All right. Let's see. I'm not going to the chair report. All right, here we go. We have one more minute. And as soon as we will continue on. This is what it was like waiting to start the meeting. There you go. All right. So I will start by reading the public notice. Notice is hereby given in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 166, that a public hearing will be held on Tuesday, October 4th, 2022, at 7:15 PM via hybrid meeting, both in person at 195 Main Street, Maynard, Mass. 01754, and remotely via Zoom per the posted agenda's instructions. The petition and plan are being presented by the N-Star Electric Company, DVA, as EverSource Energy, for the purpose of obtaining a grant of location to install one pole, number 188/7, to provide electric service to 18 Dana Road, Maynard. Copy of this petition is filed with the town clerk and the Select Board Office. So it is now open. Greg, would you like to?
So we did receive this petition on behalf of EverSource, and I want to introduce EverSource, Joanne Calendar. Joanne?
Yes.
Can you introduce yourself again, who you are, why you're here, and what you propose?
Yes, hi, I am Joanne Calendar. I am here representing EverSource Energy, and we are seeking a grant of location to install one pole, 188 over 7, and that is to provide electric service to the new home at 18 Dana Road in Maynard. And I'm here to entertain any questions that the council or the Select Board or the public might have.
Thank you.
I got a, I got a question for you, council, and it's, it's general, and you may not be able to answer it on behalf of EverSource, but I'm just wondering, you know, the future is underground wires and underground, and just basically getting rid of poles for various reasons. And when you have a one-off like this, where it's just one pole for one house, is there, is there a reason why this couldn't be sort of part of a long-term plan to move utilities underground?
Is that question for me?
Yeah, if, if, as I say, you may not be able to answer that on behalf of EverSource, but you know, is that, is that a long-term plan of your clients or are you, are you an attorney for EverSource or are you with?
I am not. I am right away agent for EverSource.
Okay.
But, and I don't know of any long-term plans as far as going underground in Maynard. Typically, it's customers' preference whether they want overhead or underground service. Underground service is more expensive, for sure, so it could be that this homeowner decided just to go with overhead service. We are installing, we are seeking a grant of location to install this one pole in the public way, but we are also installing two other poles on their private property to provide them with service.
To make it so that it goes all the way.
Correct.
Presumably. So I guess, okay, that answers my question.
So I, the only question I had was, I'm just trying to, so is it a new house? Are you the new homeowner?
Yes.
Okay, hi. And can I just have your name for the round?
Drew Anderson.
Drew Anderson, yes, meet you.
Hannah Friend.
Nice to meet you. So it looks like that we're looking at the plan, so it looks like you're going down Dana, then there's a gravel driveway and it's almost like it's behind. Kitty corner, okay, all right, so you're just looking for a pole there. Do we know what's on the other side of it? Is it just land on the other side of that?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay, all right, and conservationists have a problem with it, right?
Yes.
The one that's, okay.
Thank you.
All right. Does anyone else, any of the board members have any questions or comments?
Neither do I.
Hi.
Hi, we're actually here on behalf of 15 Dana Road, my parents, Marion and Bob Hickman.
Okay. Oh, yeah.
Through 91, you know, she's freaking out over everything. But she's got a good heart, okay? The thing is, is the pole is smacked down in the middle of her, in front of her house. And she, we do not understand why it can't be put on the corner, like everywhere is us.
Could I read your names in that?
Ginger and Carl Gordon. It's, my parents are at 15 Dana Road. It's where the pole is going to be put in. Yes, they're not.
But that's okay.
My address, we're complaining ourselves.
That's okay.
That's what I'm saying, they're 91, they're not coming out at 7:00.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that was what we're concerned about, and I can understand it. It's because the map is basically in front of the house and not on the corner.
Maybe, maybe she could answer.
So just to ask, just to ask the homeowner's children, I guess that's what it is. Now, is, that's the front yard of your parents' home?
It's the front yard of the home, yes.
Well, on the public way, though.
Right, right. But it's on the public right away in front of the house.
That's just that we have no problem with the pole being, well, we don't, my mother, of course, does, but, you know. But we're at least saying that it can be at least moved not in front of the house. She's more afraid of her property where it's going down because it's in front of the house.
Yep.
Is that something the agent could answer?
Well, what I would say is that typically the poles are spaced 100 feet apart, and so where they were positioning that pole is 100 feet from pole number six. I can certainly, I'm not an engineer, but I can certainly bring this back to our engineering group and see if it's possible to move the pole so that it's not in front of the house. And I'd gladly take your information and get back to you, or I can provide you with mine if you like.
But there's no guarantee that this can be done. And she can hold this up, and this is the problem. We don't want to hold them up.
Yes, so I don't, I don't know if it can be done, but I can certainly bring it back to the engineers and see if there's something that they can do, if it's possible to move it somewhere else, whereas it's not in front of the home.
I mean, there is a pole across the street.
Right.
And that's where we don't understand why that's not being used.
I'm sorry, are you speaking, when you say the pole across the street, are you saying on the opposite side of?
On decks, right, or on Dana?
I believe, yes, there is an existing road, there's this simple, and I think, Joanne, I'm looking at the plans, I think it's, I think it's 18-12. And it is on the other side, but it looks like if you're going to put it there, my suspicion, again, not an engineer, that, yeah, that's right, I don't, I think it would cut too close if you were trying to get to their house. It would cover right through the existing house that's at, it's like 16 Dana.
The Wolvere.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think, I think my suspicion, my interpretation of this, is that they had to go across the street to make a wider turn around to get down their driveway.
Right, but again, if you look at this, it's right in the middle of the front of the yard.
Sure, I also
He does have a walkway coming out of her house.
Yeah.
But then three feet of that walkway.
But it is on, it is on public property.
Right.
Where the pole is, so not, not to say that, I think, I want to speak to the board, but I just want to kind of emphasize that that the board does have certain rights as, you know, in, in the private property, sort of like their rights sort of stop at a certain so I just want to have that. I think, I think you voicing your mother's concerns is valid.
She's not your lawyer, which I will avoid this.
I don't, I don't disagree, but it, but my, again, I'm also not a lawyer, but I would, my interpretation is, it is up to the
All looking for is to move it more towards ticks.
All we're looking for is to move it more towards Dix, bro, sure, by about. Five or six feet, or I don't think it's uh. Going to be uh. An engineering marvel to move these wires. You know, that much further.
Is that?
If the wires have to be put certain distance apart. Then you may have to put another pole.
So is the house that, that you're referring to, your mom, your mother's house, um, is that the uh, the house right on the corner? It's a white house kind of split level?
Yes.
Ish, okay. So when you look at that property, um. Just out of curiosity, I'm looking at, and there's a, there's a big tree in the front yard, um, and. So. Do you know if the pole is, I know it's kind of like splitting hairs, but is the pole? Closer to the road from the tree, or is it more in front of the tree where it would be? Do you have any idea?
She ripped up. Close to the ground immediately.
Okay.
She figured, she pulled it up, nobody pulled it. Kind of like, no, it's worth that, like.
So do you happen to know that?
I, I was to the right.
It's, so right, to the right of the walkway, and there's a, there's a large tree at, at the, in the property, and there's, so I was just trying to get gauge like how far over, and trying to like look at the back and look at. Her property, so.
The same as one of ours.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry, okay.
All right. So, um. Greg?
Yes.
Hi, I'm looking for guidance.
No, I, I think we should. If, uh, so. I don't want to speak out of turn. My understanding is. You've, you've, you've accomplished the public hearing, you've heard the input from the, from representative in this case, right?
Yeah.
I suspect that the board could still move forward with approving this, this, this call, however. I think it might be. Although to the detriment probably of the homeowners that are trying to.
General relate.
Expediently, right? That, that if you were to entertain and to, and to take up Joanne on her offer to go back to see the engineers, moving, you can do so. As I said, the disadvantage would be to know. But, you know, hopefully we can come back within two weeks. I know you don't want to hear that. Okay. I just like after options.
You can work two weeks.
Because that's the next one.
Here, here's my other question about that. So, Joanne. Just out of curiosity, if that's something that you could go back and ask about, when would you have, uh, when could you have an answer about that?
I'm sure I could have an answer. Today being uh. Tuesday, I could have an answer by Friday. I'm sure.
Is there, is there a way, and I don't know because it's legalities?
Yeah.
Is there a way to approve this? At, approve it. But. Give a preferred location of, or is that to?
Possibly, but I wouldn't recommend that because um, the, the documentation we have.
Yeah.
Which would be like the formal sort of where this location is going to be according to these plans, provided.
Right.
It's going to be here, this time, like I would recommend keeping everything on the up and up and getting. If it's going to be.
I'm, I'm looking at Google Earth as well, and I see there's a lot of agitation at the end of the fence on that house. This sort of gets to my original point about underground wires, or, you know, this. Could be resolved with underground wires, but I understand, I understand the cost issues.
There's no, there's no other underground wires in that's, in that whole neighborhood.
I realize that, but.
The other side, on the other side of that neighborhood. When you get to, um, you know, Michael Road and, and Dix, and not Dix, but Ricky and some of those, everything's underground, but that end of the street is all above ground.
I get it, but that doesn't mean you can't have, you can't start underground, especially from the pole that's. Closest and, and then drag, and then drag it into the uh. Into the area where the home is being built, but beyond that. And I realized the hundred and fifty or a hundred yards, whatever it is, hundred foot thing, but it looks like there's a lot of vegetation at the end of the fence. That a pole could go in and not disrupt, other than the, the wire going above, not disrupt the front of the home. Uh, but it would probably be a hundred and fifty feet or a hundred, whatever the, I can't tell what the distance is. Um, which causes problems for EverSource.
I, I think, uh, just to kind of help the board, and then they have some better perspective. Why, why would it be? And I know I was putting words here. Speak to the timing of you trying to get this done.
I appreciate, um, so we have financing on the project. And we have to, our financing ends on October twenty-first. So we need to have, have our set up house before October twenty-first in order to meet our financing deadlines.
Good.
And we put this. Into EverSource June fourth. So for, oh, you know, yeah, we're just running out of time, and it's not like, I spoke with her mother numerous times, of, you know, I'm completely. You know, I want to play nice in the neighborhood, I just, I need the power of the house, sure, so. I stretched the wires two hundred feet if I could, so.
No, I just, you understand, because I was over in China. Do the best. For her.
So the board, so let's say, like hypothetically, if the board decides not to. Use this item until the next board meeting. So, which is three days or so before you want this done. I don't know the timing, it's not, so like, if the board meets. Uh, the next day. Presumably, I'll be around, and I will notify, EverSource will already know the results, but I, I will make everything signed, da-da-da-da, get up the door, copy and email to everybody up door, but I don't know if the power.
Exactly, I don't see them running wires from.
Right.
Right.
I was just.
Right.
And the other problem is that we can't do, I believe, um. If we try to meet next week, there's legal, there's public hearing notice.
Wait, we don't, remind me, I'm looking at board.
Well, you can continue this public hearing.
But I don't think we have to re-notify. Right, I didn't think so, so.
Continue this.
Yeah, you continue this.
I don't remember newspaper, so it's, it's, it'll be in the minutes that you've continued till. A certain, now you should continue a certain date.
Right.
That's recommended. Happy to continue with, but I'm happy to.
What do you think you got for home anyways? Well, with the rotor, you got up, why aren't they?
That's shouldn't be a hundred and forty-five year, you don't want to do this. Yeah.
You got the road anyways, not to put your pole in. In your.
Water, water.
Yeah, can you speak to that, Julie?
Yeah, so.
Can you introduce that?
Julie, I'm a preservation agent, uh, working with Drew a lot. He's under his very strict order of conditions. Um, has to follow a lot of rules. Um, and the reason is because there's a lot of ledge in this area, um, so you may have. Heard, um, the construction site, uh, they are, which is the grill and ship away.
We saw.
Yeah. That's really expensive, so. But. Overhead wired. The other thing. That the, the reason why I'm here, the first place, the two private utility poles, you just need to agree the major plans to the conservation. To, to make sure that we get the, the new plants as well.
All right.
So is there a way for us to produce a contingency, or does that work?
I recommend it, um, because you may be able to, we don't typically, I've not seen that before, maybe it is a possibility, and because I'm not so comfortable with that. I, I'm going to recommend it. Like the, the plans are stamped. So, right.
That's.
I, I personally, I would approve it, and just with the understanding that, you know, we, we have. We have a representative of um, EverSource who has agreed to try and. Determine whether or not it's possible to um, meet the homeowner's needs, you know, the, the, the current homeowner on the corner at fifteen. I mean, that, you know, she clearly is willing to, you know, have that conversation with the people at EverSource and see if it's, if it's doable. I don't know how, you know, I'd like to the point, I don't know if you, if you stretch those. If you move that pole ten or twelve feet, I don't know what the weight of the wires is going to do to the, the poles on both ends in the sag in the middle, because then is someone going to be getting. Oh, the wires are hanging too low, now I can see them in front of my house when I look at my window. I don't know, but I don't. I mean, I.
We recently had that, we recently had to solve a pole because.
We've all, we've all grown up in houses with poles in our yards and everything else, and I have two giants. Comcast bunkers in my yard that I don't like, but. That's the way it is. I, I don't see one pole is going to affect. But, but to your point, Chris, I think if we approve this, it'll reflect in the minutes about the fact that, you know, um, Joanne's, is that her name?
Yes.
Uh, that she's going to be working with us to try to. See. And he does a point, I think that if, if EverSource is saying. You know, and we've had success in town, and EverSource has been, you know, helped us in many ways, and we've helped them.
Right.
It's a good relationship, I trust the relationship. And I hope that the homeowners trust the relationship, if EverSource suggests that they're going to, um. So, seek a way to remedy this for everybody's benefit and to everybody's satisfaction, that they will. And, and if it helps the process to get these. You know, to get the um. Get the power where it needs to be in time, I think that, that helps everybody as well. That's my opinion.
So I, and I just want to add, uh. More sense, two cents, whatever, um. The, the couple letter from this.
Inflation, more sense.
Yeah, I know. So what if? Um. You know, one of the aspects of, of this position does say that, that the, uh, the pole would be located substantially additional by the plans, by. To vote, which is probably an issue for EverSource, um, dated August sixteen. The attached plans, right, which do give a specific location, although not aware, but substantially sounds like maybe if it was off by a foot or two, no, that's not, that would be a situation. Like not significant change, however, the, the. The petition that, like certification that's in front of the board right now. Does say that, uh, the pole job is sound timbre located as shown on a plan made by T. Timbo dated August sixteen, twenty twenty-two, so again. If it, I would be reluctant to recommend a significant change to the plans.
Right.
Because that was part of like the, the official documentation. Um, unless you go back to the board. If you prove, if you prove it this evening.
We're proving it as is.
Right, and that's what I understand. And if there was going to be a change in that, then I would. New plans, which the board is tapping.
And then, um. Not to replay history, is there a reason why this came down to the very end like this, where the timing is such that we don't have time to really? Talk.
That's a great question, dude, um, I, as soon as I got this, I, I notified the newspaper and got it out. And, and Mr. Holmes came through, right, yeah, came and tried to follow us up, like he, he was, he was pretty good about it. So I'm not, I'm not pointing to him at Joanne, but I, I'm, I'm saying, I don't, I can't speak for EverSource, but it, but whatever the delay was. I, I think we did, we expedited it, and it got to my desk. Um, it was in the newspaper for this meeting.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Harry, it's obvious.
Still want to.
All right. Um, well. So, I mean, we can, we can do two things, so whoever wants to make a motion, I will allow them to make a motion. We can either approve. Move to approve the grant as, uh, and grant the location as, as it is. Or. Or we can answer the phone. Or we can move to continue it to next Tuesday night.
Right, you could do that.
Um. And I know that's not what you want to hear.
I just, no, no.
Eighteen. Yeah.
I don't know. I think this.
Yeah.
I, uh, from, from my perspective, I think we should, we should approve it the way it is, with. With the understanding that they're going to do. Um, whatever they take to find a solution and remedy this, there's a way.
Potentially, you are trusting EverSource.
Correct.
Okay.
Again, it's reflecting in our minutes, and I think that, that should be something that.
Okay. Uh, so before, before you make any motions, uh, does anybody else have any comments, any members of the public? Members? Okay, all right.
Move to approve a grant of location to install one pole, number one eighty-eight. Slash seven to provide electric service to eighteen Dana Road, Maynard. The petition and plan is being presented by N Star Electric Company to emboss this EverSource Energy for the purpose of obtaining a grant of location, authorizing the use of digital signatures if approved.
Second. Okay. Uh, all in favor, David?
Uh. Yes.
Yes.
I'm a yes.
Yes.
Uh, so I, I apologize to you.
That's why you got probably here.
No, I, I agree, but sometimes we don't like it, though. We don't, we don't like the decisions we have. Doesn't.
Very struggle.
All right, so I will entertain a motion to close this hearing.
Make a motion to close the hearing.
Seven thirty-eight.
Eighteen Dana Road pole installation at seven thirty-nine, yeah.
Five seconds.
Second.
All right, all in favor, David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Uh, next up on the agenda, we have the, um. Item number six, or back to item number six, which is the community preservation committee.
Stay here, you want to?
Thank you for a good one. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Yes.
Just a reminder for everyone to jacks.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, I forgot to say talking to the owl.
Yeah.
That is. Exactly. All right. So, uh. Next on the agenda is item six, community preservation committee, and this is regarding the, um. Possible, uh, notice of intent to the community preservation committee for other improvements or replacement bleachers at alumni field. Um, Greg, would you like to speak to this?
Right, I gave an introduction, so, um. The, the town's community preservation committee is accepting, actually, their deadline, I believe, was yesterday, I believe, for, um, a notice of intent, which is the first step towards an application for the consideration of the C P C. In their deliberation of, of use of the Community Preservation Act surcharge on everyone's tax bills that, that is, uh, goes into various buckets, um. That eventually may go towards town meeting. Reason, so, um. The athletic director, uh, for Maynard Public Schools, Michael Aria, is the applicant in this case, um, who drafted two different notes of intent. One is for improvements to the existing alumni field bleachers, and the second is for full replacement of the alumni field bleachers. Um, the improvements, um, has an estimated cost of two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, and the application has a C P A. Together with Community Preservation Act funds request of a hundred and fifty thousand of that two hundred thousand, and then, uh, remaining balance of fifty thousand dollars could be free cash or otherwise. Um. And. The replacement of the existing bleachers, uh, is for two million dollars. Let me, let me, make sure, let me bring that up, make sure I'm not getting.
This.
Good, very good.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Of which, uh, the C P A funds request is one billion eight hundred seventy-five thousand ninety-seven dollars, which is a. Two million dollars reduced by seventy-four thousand, which was an appropriation from the annual meeting in June of twenty twenty-two, um. And so. Oh, and then as well as. Well, there, there would, there would need to be, uh. Other. Means, whether it be cash otherwise to, to create that full balance, uh, but anyways, that's been, that's been. Presented to the school committee, both of these N O I's, to the school committee, um, and I have a report from the superintendent's office that they did, uh, approve. Um, sponsorship of these N O I's, and then. There was a direction from the select board that the board would, as we are this evening, entertain. Um. Uh, considering sponsoring them as well. The Recreation Commission is not weighed into my knowledge, so we're, so we're not, we're not having them be part of this, uh, notice of intent or application of this funding, that could change. Um, because we believe that the Recreation Commission, of course, has a valuable perspective on this matter. But school committee select board is pretty strong.
Which proposal is being pushed forward, Greg?
Oh, both.
Both of them.
No.
Yeah. Yeah, and so, again, this is only the first step, so, um, I have a first one, John Dwyer, who's the chair of the C P C today, and he said, it's just that, it's, you, you gotta hit it from the door, put the notice of intent into the C P C. They meet tomorrow night, and they're just going to do a quick first review. Um, I, I mentioned it's just like an initial screening, to see which ones are really. Um, not applicable to C P A ones or otherwise, and then it'll, I suspect the C, C P C will have to do some back finding and really evolve the.
So is it possible? Go, go ahead, just state, sorry.
No, that's fine, I was just going to find out wh-when the application itself is due, do we know that?
I think that's a month later. I think that's a month later.
Early November.
Okay. Right.
Well, we have the design information back from the engineers.
And actually, that's a good question. So um. Uh what you're referring to manager is that the the town has inherited design engineering services through a house talk contract. And we reached out to one of them, Leroy. I can't remember the. But Leroy and um they had a couple, they had some representatives that came out to the site. Like toured the site, looked at the existing bleachers, um wrote up a scope of work, which myself and the building commissioner and uh Justin DiMarco, the. Director of Public Works reviewed, but then had some feedback to go back to the engineer. So I'm expecting that um shortly. I can't say when uh they'll have like the full scope of work, which I know already this last week, uh with the select word, but a full scope of work as to what we could consider to do contracted. Improvements and otherwise to uh modifications, A A clients, et cetera, to to the existing bleachers. And that'd be like phase one. All of this is kind of phase one for the improvements and then phase two is represented by the other other N O I, which is the replacement. Uh but I, so I, to your question, manager, no, I don't yet have um those recommended um plans for improvements otherwise, but. Should go to get this.
And my question is, it is theoretical then, Greg, as anything is theoretical, I guess, but that the C P C may say we, there's no way we can. Fund the two million dollar project, so we won't entertain that, but we will entertain. Um the repair slash long term, longer term. Project with, and then we would then have to to sort of move forward with our plan to fund a long term solution. Is that, is that accurate?
That could be scenario, right, a good.
Could they also de- decide not to just not to give the full amount, but to give a partial?
What they've done in the past.
So instead of, you know, we keep, we're not gonna do two million, but we might do. Half a million or a million or something like that.
Right, all the time ahead, I'm not actually sure what's, what what is in the reserves or what.
Right, or or fun, right, exactly.
That we don't, we don't really understand what's in what bucket and how much they have for a given year. And then we've also, we've we've also got um other. Resources to grab at. Once we know which direction we're heading in specifically state resources. Um and then we also begin a capital campaign.
Yeah.
Fundraising.
Yeah.
Do what?
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so um and as as um you mentioned, Greg, the meeting is tomorrow night at seven P M when they will be um just doing the cursory cursory look, so.
So I think I think what I as um as you know, what I think what I'm expecting or asking of the board is to consider whether you want to. Remember this N O I's.
All right.
I'm good.
All right, I will entertain a motion.
Is it a motion or is this a recommended action? Now move to approve the notices of intent to community preservation committee, C P C, for improvements and replacement of bleachers at a long way field. Thank you.
All right, any further discussion? All right, uh all in favor, David?
I, yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
And I'm yes.
Would you let us know what the decision was?
All right, very good. Uh next, item number seven is community choice aggregation. Uh we received a proposal last week about this. And Greg, do you want to speak any more to this?
Yeah, so um the board, at my recollection, and I don't I don't mean to speak for individual members, but the the sense of the board that I. Read was that um you had some considerations, you didn't think about it for the first time, right? So it's only been a week. Uh just as a coincidence that happened in a script for me in the. So perhaps you need more time, but if um. What I was seeking is some direction. So as your agent, I could, I could potentially negotiate a consulting contract with Peregrine Energy Group without necessarily you saying I should, I have to, but that doesn't mean you would have to agree to any. But I, before I went down that road, I wanted to sort of like get clarification. And get direct authorization, if you actually want me to negotiate with Peregrine Energy Group. Again, Peregrine was um the recommended firm by the Sustainability Committee. Uh so there's a, there is a handful of these sort of um consulting uh entities that that help towns and municipalities. And Peregrine pointed out, there's like a hundred and fifty already existing community choice communities. Um Peregrine seems recordable enough, so uh Sustainability Committee endorses them. And and I could negotiate with them to be a consultant, and really, my understanding is they would really see this through. So from sort of like the the onset of of. Of considerations and the procurement of the actual energy supply and then community notifications, contracting, et cetera. Um I think Peregrine will really hold her hand through the whole thing. If the board wants us to go to that. I think there's some good questions.
And I don't have a problem, I don't have a problem as you're gonna negotiate a contract and before we sign it, it's gonna come back to us. So if we have, if we continue to have questions, that will be the time to, you know. Answer. I mean, I started, like I've been reading about it and everything, you know, looking online and stuff and trying to find out more about it and asking people in some of the communities that I know. Were listed that are, you know, fall under the the, you know, the um terms of other contracts they have, so. You know, just doing that research, but I don't think that that should prohibit you from having the conversations to get it started. If there are other questions, we can get them answered in a later date. No.
David, do you have any comments?
Uh my only comment would be, I I did have an opportunity to speak with um a colleague of mine who is on the select. Board in Wayland, who um has adopted and begun the process of moving forward. He said they really haven't gone that far down the road. They're not active um relative. I was asking him about um how many opt outs there might be or whatever. Um the one insight that he did, well, a couple of things. He did say that he would be more than happy to ask his um. The folks on his sustainability group to meet with ours, because that's who is really driving the bus for them, is there's, they have a sustainability team. Uh a committee like we do. Um and they're the ones, he said, they're really the ones that are that are taking it and running with it and making it work. Um so we could have a coordinated effort, at least Wayland. If uh the folks on sustainability are interested in speaking with anybody from that group as to how they implemented and are moving forward. They're not live with it from what I sensed. Uh he did, I asked him about savings and all that other thing, and he just said, uh you know, really hasn't been much there, because it's still in the developmental stage, but. They're further ahead than we are, so they have um. They have some insight that we don't have and it might be helpful as we move forward.
Okay. Um. My my only concern is again, and it's just, and I guess we can, I can talk about it when it comes back around again. I personally don't love that it's an opt out contract that opt out. And and I understand that that's the way that they operate, and I have also done the research, um some research online. Um going through the Mass Doc gov website and going to a couple of the other towns that um that have it. I understand. Why? And the reason why is because most people don't pay attention, and so they all just end up opting in. Um. Which is fine, and that's how you get the most, I mean, uh because it's hard enough, we all know this, it's hard enough to get anybody to sign up for most things these days. Um, so this is the way to get the most. Bang for your buck. I I don't love it, um so that's just my two cents of that part. But we can revisit that later also.
Yeah, I think to Chris's point, it's kind of, you're gonna have, take a look at it again, and this comes back. While you while you while you.
I would think, I would think um my impression is that an opt in program wouldn't be successful, because you would not necessarily get. The volume that you need in order to find the savings that are available down the road. Um and. I have not heard of, not that they don't exist, I'm I'm certain they do, of um the opt in programs um. Don't know which towns did you look at that were opt in?
So they so on, they there aren't any, and that's the same thing. So, you know, acting was not out, like they're all locked out. For you that you just said, but the question is.
I I just, I just have a problem with opt out. The the opt out language in how it's, how is it presented? I want to see how it's presented. How an individual, how an individual gets notified and and what, you know, and how clear the options are. You know, who notifies them? Is it the power company? Is it the town? Is it? Is it somebody with um Peregrine? Someone has to notify residents. And they, and then notify them when there are options. I'm just interested to see what what that looks like, because. As we talk about, you know. Different groups in town and different demographics in town. Is everybody gonna understand what they're getting and what they're reading and what they're seeing? And do they, do you really have the opportunity to opt out? You don't understand what you're, if we're putting them into? That's my only concern. I, we're gonna take everybody in town and put them in a program that they can opt out of. How many people that we put into that program are ever gonna know they had the opportunity to opt out? And how many of them are ever actually gonna have the opportunity to know that they're in a program?
And I think it's hard now, and and we've gone over this before, is is now that we don't have a newspaper in town. It's not something that you have, you know, that that there's, you're missing. A point of contact, you know, we can do, we can do the reverse nine one one, uh you know, to to residents. I know, so I I've seen the mailings that Acton did to, you know, to their residents. You know, I'm I'm sure that that's something that came from Acton Letterhead. I'm sure it would come from Town and Maynard Letterhead. Um. You know, but again, just I, that's, so for me, that's just a sticking point. Um Sana, I see your hand raised.
Hi, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh so I'm at nine Sunset Road. Um and I, maybe it's helpful, because I I lived in another town when they started this, so I remember what it was like when it started. I didn't know about it till I received a letter in the mail, and it outlined all the different options. Um I did change my option, so I don't remember how it worked, but it was so easy. So I, it's not even memorable. Um, you know, so it was very clear what the different options were, what the different tiers were, and how to move around in them. Um I think they gave you the per kilowatt rate, what the percent of renewables was, what the expected. I think monthly or yearly, you know, energy cost impact is gonna be. Um based on like whatever the typical amount was consumed per household. Um so it's, I I understand the concerns around that, but I think that, at least in my experience, it was extremely easy, so.
Thank you.
I I still don't have any any problem with you signing the process of negotiating. And that's, I welcome that, because then we'll be further down the road when we get to answer the questions we might have.
Yeah.
Well, then I will, I, is there any other comments? Then I will entertain a motion.
All right, I will make a motion to authorize the town administrator to negotiate a consulting contract. With Peregrine Energy Group to implement community trace aggregation program for the town of Maynard.
Second.
Uh all in favor, uh David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Armin?
Yes.
I'm a yes. All right. Thank you. Um. Because when that comes back, the contract will vote on the contract as well.
Yeah, you're not agreed to anything.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, uh next we're going to number eight contracts. Which is the uh weights and measures, visions of standards twenty twenty three, exciting stuff.
Yeah, well, sure, uh I'm gonna.
Thank you. Um weights measures is a duty of the opposite municipal services that we don't talk about very much. But um it is very important, and we are very lucky to have the division of standards perform this effort for the town of Maynard. They do for many communities in the states. And um we have, we have contracted with them for a number of years, so they are increasing their rates. Um and so they've given us, you know, plenty of notice here and suggested the way it works is that um. The state comes out and performs the inspection. And um the state invoices to Town and Maynard, we pay the state for that work. And then we send individual invoices to the businesses based on uh the types of scales and items that they have. So um. This contract shows an increase to their their rate in with with the town of Maynard, and um. So that's what we're asking today, but I also included um a proposed fee schedule. Uh for your consideration to review tonight and answer any questions to get any input, and what I'd like to do is bring him back um for your for your approval at a future meeting.
Yeah, okay. So the fees that that in the schedule.
You guys are only gonna pay our fees.
So the schedule is our fees, um but the contract shows that they're gonna charge us. Um. I think just over five thousand dollars for this.
Do the, do our increase in proposed fees cover the cover the five thousand?
They do, yes.
That's.
Yep. And it's a, it's a small increase. I tried to do it, do as little as I could to make sure we're still covering them.
So. So if I'm reading this correctly, we haven't had an increase since twenty seventeen.
Correct.
And and it's the increases sold minimum.
The increase for, you know, I I did a couple of different scenarios to see what it would, how it would impact different businesses. So for our biggest business that has with the measures, um that would be market basket, exactly. Um so that would increase by four hundred and forty five dollars as an annual um increase to their bill, which, you know, of course it's not. Um but then, you know, some smaller um gas stations in town, it would be about a hundred, hundred fifty dollars. So that that seems to be the range. Some people it would just be.
And do they have a trace to pay that in one lump, or they pay it out after that?
Uh we're flexible. Most people pay, we invoice them um as soon as we get it, because it's. It's usually a pretty tight turnaround, um but I have had some businesses that have to split it up, and we have, we have done that.
I'm not worried about market basket.
Yeah, I mean, it's 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 a challenge. I mean, we're we're often chasing, you know, sending several reminders to some businesses, and it is a uh. It does take up a significant amount of administrative time, because we don't have it in our automated system, because it's only so many. Um but. You know, I think that. We have it under control. We've had some turnover in the office, so it's it's been a little tricky last couple of years, but we're ahead of it, and so is the department um. The state, because they have had a lot of turnover and they've been deleting, getting us invoices, and it's been, it's been kind of an evolving relationship, but. I think now they have new staff in place and they have new contracts going out, and so I think we kind of know what's with that going forward.
All right, uh any other questions, comments? All right, so in I'll authorize, I I mean, I will. Yeah.
Entertain.
Entertain, one of those things, emotion, also, so and the proposed weights and measures, we'll just see, we're not voting on those tonight, correct? We'll just see those the next time around.
That was, that was what I was thinking, but if there's any feedback on these, then I would like to take it, so I could update them for next year.
Okay.
Yeah, fair, fair.
Yeah.
For five years.
Yeah. I agree.
All right, so.
Move to authorize the county administrator to move contract. With the Division of Standards for Weights and Measures Enforcement for a term to begin January one twenty twenty three.
Second.
All right, all in favor, David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Armin?
Yes.
And I'm yes. Right. Thank you. All right, moving on to number nine is select board annual goals. Um. So we met. Back in August.
Uh yeah.
Ish, yeah. Um for our annual goal setting meeting and had a great conversation. Uh basically, it's just a lot of brainstorming and trying to figure out. Um the direction of uh the board, the town, uh what we can do to help the town. Um, you know, and how town staff can can help us meet our goals. So we had some great conversation and uh. There is a summary of our draft goals that Greg has provided for us. Does anybody have any comments? About these goals?
Well, I have to say, from my perspective, I'm trying to help out with that, and I'm working on. Um the, one of the uh goals that it's called about empowering volunteers to increase uh public awareness. Um, the one of the uh goals that it's called about empowering volunteers to increase uh public awareness. So I'm hoping that I'm. Um, giving a helping hand there and I'm trying to mobilize a few volunteers to. Come up with some ways of supporting the town, um, the town staff, knowing that they're, you know, overwhelmed and they have a lot going on. So we're trying to uh do the best we can from our end, some volunteer work. Um, and the the other goal and s- support capital plan to meet the long-term needs of the community. The last one is to offer participation. By our large residents towards exploring long-term solutions for serving the town seniors, which is another piece that I'm trying to uh. Help with that too. I'm I'm trying to do my part.
Excellent.
So you like those two draft calls, as you said?
Yeah, well, I.
I think he approves of those.
I think that uh we did, I in my opinion, this was probably one of our better ones. I mean, I, you know, over over time, we've done several of these and. It's nice, nice to see that there's some emphasis put on areas that I think will be important to um. Oh, the other pieces, the champion efforts to re-envision the the power powder mill quarter. I mean, there's a lot going on there. So that's something that Bill Nemza should be very proud of what he's trying to do from his perspective. That's gonna be a huge um. Opportunity for us down the road, so I think we. I know there was a public uh meeting, meeting on the twenty eighth that that was very successful and good participation.
Great. Anyone else have any comments? On the goals?
No, I I uh I made my opinions known uh at that meeting, so I'm I'm satisfied.
Excellent. Yeah, I I actually look forward to uh, you know, the enhancing the communication with residents. I like the FAQ idea. Um, and I did bring it up briefly with uh the the budget sub-community meeting, uh, but I, as chair, will send out an email to everybody. Um, looking for basically questions that we all get. That we could help answer, we could get answered and put them online. So um, so there would be a place to direct people. For, you know, questions about what an override is, um, what capital projects. You know, how how are capital projects decided? How is the tax rate set? Why, you know, why are taxes so high? I mean, that's when we can, we can definitely do an FAQ on. Um, so so I look forward to being able to educate the residents a little bit more on those things as well. Um, and honestly, we can't do anything without our volunteers. So I think that was, that came through loud and clear with uh with our goal setting meeting. Um, we know that uh they are such a force here in town and uh and we appreciate everything they do and all the efforts they put in. Because without them, we would not be able to get a lot accomplished. So. And that is all.
Just an um an observation, I think that we talked about that elevating the role of MBA. Um, that I have to say that I think uh they're on the right track. They. Actually have a new chair and vice chair and I think they're they're a little bit more energized. I like to see them become a lot more involved in town. And I'm hoping that one of these days the D C starts, you know, getting up and running again. Find a way to support that, but uh. One of the things that we were talking about, um, we're in our, one of our volunteer um. Group, which is the marketing Maynard, you know, we we changed the name from marketing Maynard group to marketing. Maynard Working Task Force. Try to be a little bit more proactive. Uh, we were talking about how MBA could be a little bit more active and and promoting. The town, promoting, you know, the businesses in town. So I'm gonna get more involved with um communicating with them, still back communication. Communicating with them and also finding a way to how to communicate with the residents at large and getting their. You know, input and opinion about what they want to see going on in town.
All right. Uh, anyone else? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Consider draft select board F Y twenty-three annual goal as presented. In order to approve the select board fiscal year twenty twenty-three annual goal.
All right, all in favor, David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Armin?
Yes.
I am, yes. Thank you. All right, moving on to the special town meeting, which is coming up on October twenty-fourth.
Yeah.
Very exciting.
You think?
Yes, it is exciting.
It's indoors.
It's indoors, like this is, it's.
Backward.
We're in, so it's gonna be interesting. Um, being the fact that it is indoors, uh, one thing that has, we have not been doing over the past uh outdoor meetings. Is that the select board members typically present by board-sponsored articles at Town Lady. So that is the purpose of tonight's meeting, tonight's agenda item, correct?
Yeah, we were gonna, we were gonna assign.
I am, yeah. We could assign them all to Jeff because he's not here.
He there's. Isn't that the way it works? Yeah, sure. He did say that he had no preference. Oh, yeah, no, it's always wherever the body.
It's called a voluntold.
Yes.
Um, so there are seven of them. There are five of us. So does anyone have any particular? Um, so we have articles one, three, four, five, six, seven, and nine. Does anyone have any preference to? One they particularly like? Everyone picks one first, you will go from there.
You wanna pick zero because I'm not sure if you're standing up at that point.
Oh, certainly. Oh, yeah.
All right, fine, okay.
Okay, you can't do a suit.
I don't know, good, but no, I can stand, but I'm willing to have one arm. I don't even know if I'll be there. I don't know, I don't know where.
Don't say you're gonna have one arm. He's gonna be the.
So, okay.
He's gonna be the one-armed bandit then.
Sorry, so I'll start with David. Do you have any preference?
Um, I really don't. Um, there's uh but so other, you said there were seven. So you're you're excluding the bylaw committee and the community preservation committee presentations? Because somebody still has to do the motion presumably.
You, uh, that's true.
So we have to move those.
How we know that in the past?
Uh, we have moved them ourselves and then turned it over to the subject matter expert for presentation.
For the outdoor meetings, have we done, what about?
That's how we did it. That's how we did it indoors as well. Typically, if um, the only ones we don't is when it. No, even on, even on the, I'm try- I'm trying to think it through, even on the um. The ones that are um, uh, planning board. I think the motion gets made by the select board and uh then it gets turned over to the expert from the planning board. But I don't think it really matters.
Could you do both? I mean, you decide who's gonna move all the articles and then separately, who may be. Um, yeah, you just.
Well, typically whoever does the motion would do, would be the subject matter expert on that particular. Item. So if it were number two, free cash certification re- reporting and say. Um, Armin says, okay, I'll do the motion. He would then turn it over to the subject matter expert for uh to the bylaw. Uh, to the bylaw committee.
Okay. So do you wanna pick uh two, David, that you would like to do?
I will do um five.
I have the transfer marijuana.
Transfer marijuana, community impact payments.
All right, do you have another one that you'd like to do also? If we're gonna move on nine?
Uh. Then I would probably, to keep it smooth, either four or six. So that I'm only up standing up that one time, uh, not bouncing around, tripping over Chris.
All right, um.
But to that point, then I'll do six and seven then.
All right, so hold on. So David, I'll have you do four, amend the Water Enterprise Fund.
Yeah.
Is that good for you?
That's fine.
Why don't you do six too then? Because that's Amanda Stewart.
Yeah, I don't know why they're not in in order.
Uh, because uh the town moderator felt uh.
Because after time, yes, time votes.
Because the type of vote.
Ah, okay.
Got it, he's right.
Yeah. All right, so Armin, do you want to do six or do?
Yeah, I'll do six and seven.
Six and seven, all right. Hmm. Um.
Just make sure you remind you.
Okay, I'll look to you.
Okay, all right, I will. Okay, so I will do. Eight and nine. So we'll have Jeff do one, two, and three. Which is, which is, I mean, so the chair is doing um the borrowing, the free cash, and the general fund. So I think that's appropriate also. Um, so, yeah, does that work for everybody?
Yes.
Yeah, Greg, just a question on uh Article eight. Um. No, not not a Article seven. Um. Isn't that dependent on, i- is that at all, I guess the question is, is that at all dependent on what the? Uh, CPC does relative to the most recent motion we made this evening?
I would say it's if I I wrote, so admittedly, I wrote the original graph in the entire, and I envisioned it being collaborative. So if if one, meaning the hundred seventy-four thousand dollars is approved. And that's that gets us a certain amount of ways, although it's not clear because when I have an engineering plan, we have done school boards, we don't know how much to prove this day, et cetera, et cetera. Or how much could be remaining of that to go towards designs, which is the other N O Y for the replacement of those features. So I meant it to be kind of like. All options on the table. If we can get this money to go towards either of those two uh. Uh, activities, there are improvements and or the uh replacement, and we should use that. Like it would be good to have all these buckets available. So it's it it was, it was not, it was not a different. Let me just clarify. It was not one or the other. I meant it to be, let's try to get all our options.
And I think it would be of, just from my perspective, and when that comes up, we, by then, we will know the decision. And we could actually make a comment regarding that maybe.
Well, no, no.
No, the application.
Oh, okay.
And that's just for the application. When did they actually vote on?
Yeah. Won't be by the twenty-fourth.
Probably what?
I don't think it's, I I don't think they actually vote on what they're going to fund for quite some time.
Yeah, never mind, never mind.
Yeah, I think this just gives, you know, the Article seven just gives the flexibility.
To have.
To be able to utilize it in a better way. So, um, you know. In a more universal way.
A different way.
Correct.
Yeah, because I haven't said four thousand dollars is a long ways to. No, I know, I'm just still proud of it.
And when does the CPC meet? Did you say tomorrow night, Wednesday?
Our night, seven P M on Zoom. Yep. I just looked it up.
Yep. I think that's unfortunate for that.
All right.
And then, as I said, um, the county already provided draft uh presentations, motions. And then we're, we've already have a a pre-meeting schedule, but I I need to use my work, especially without an admin, so I I just. We're, we're in the mode now. Tell me it's coming.
Yes, it it is.
What is it, two weeks from tonight, from last night?
Yeah, yeah, uh, no, three. We just gave it, we just gave Greg a heart attack.
Yeah.
It's three weeks from Monday.
And and this next Monday, the holidays, that's our four day work week, that's the way.
All right, good. All right, sounds good. Then.
April.
We are on the chair report, I believe, done, except we've done the.
We did the correspondence.
Did the correspondence, yes. Um, yep, so I'm not the chair, but I act as the chair. Uh, only thing I know, we've already said it a few times tonight, but I do want to thank everyone who participated in Maynard Fest this weekend. Uh, it was fantastic. Uh, it was just great to see everybody out and. Despite the rain, whatever, everyone came out to support the vendors, they came out to support the town. Um, it was, it was really a lot of fun, so. Uh, so kudos to Sarah Creasy and all of the uh vendors that. That participated. It was uh, it was definitely fantastic. Uh, other than that, I will. End there. So Chris, what do you have?
The same thing about um that, then I noticed the um. Had an opportunity to listen, going to Striving Food, because I wasn't home, on my way home, a couple of bands playing porch fest.
Yeah.
It was kind of cool. I didn't, I had asked them what it was a month ago, but I wasn't on here, so I did get to hear a couple of uh. Bands playing on my way home the other night, Sunday afternoon. That was nice, that was it.
All right, uh, David?
Yeah, I just want to, um, and I'm sure all the members of the board feel the same. I wish Angie, Greg mentioned it earlier, Angie Marama. Uh, best wishes on her retirement and good luck. Thank you for her work for the community and for uh. For what she did for us relative to prepping us for uh tax hearings and everything else some. So uh, well-deserved retirement and I wish her well and best wishes.
Thank you, absolutely. Armin?
Well, second, the Maynard Fest, uh, was awesome. Porch Fest, I I had to, I have to say, I went to every single one. The best one was the one on Great Road. That was, that was my favorite. I went to all of them a lot, yeah. All I did is I went, I listened to, you know, the.
Your port topic.
Yeah, I did. About ten fifteen minutes. The one I hung on the most is Great Road, was the musical show.
I drove past the Great Road one.
I didn't, I didn't walk. Oh, oh, I took my car.
The traffic was a little tough over there on Great Road.
Road, yeah.
Yeah.
The cars were parked on, yeah.
Cars were parked on the roadway and, you know, it's uh, it's not an easy road to have a lot of traffic, especially. It was almost infringing on the light as the traffic went so, went so far back.
Where, so what number Great Road was it?
It was right before those condos, before those condos of near Winter Street. It was right in that general area.
Okay.
It was one hundred Great Road, is that's.
Okay, got it.
Um, yeah, that that was, that was a fun, I think it was a fun event, and I know the uh people that worked on it, uh, they were a little. Um, because they were supposed to have it last year. And that was the original.
So, so it's a, it's, which I didn't know. Be just reading them about it, but it's not just a a local thing. It's a.
Yes.
It's a, it's a mu- much larger thing.
Yeah.
There was other communities hosting the same thing, the same weekend.
Yeah.
And in in other states.
And and some of the musicians were from out of town. A lot, a lot of the musicians.
Which I did not know. It's it's a bigger event than just.
And and I had, I had heard about Porch Fest, but I always thought that it was sort of like frat row, where it was not partying, but that. It was a row of, it was all in the same area.
Same area, yeah.
I didn't realize that it was throughout the community.
So it's funny because one of them, Eric Hanson's house, the photographer, it was his house, and I didn't realize it was his house. So I'm sitting over there next to him, standing next to me, and I said, oh, I said, are you planning to go to the other ones? No, he goes, I have to stay here. I go, why? It's your house. Yeah, so. Uh, that's true. Yeah, they, yeah, anyway, I I'm hoping that next year it becomes, you know, the second, it's first annual, so hopefully it'll, it'll be something that. It'll add to the cultural district environment, the atmosphere, because I think it's helpful. Um, my um only comment that I have, I would should say, kind of report, because I'm the liaison to. Um, Art Space, they had a meeting last night. And um they're still very disappointed and concerned about the negotiation process when it comes to the lease. Hoping that, I know you guys are talking back and forth and. Um, hoping that will come to some kind of a resolution that's amicable. And they're concerned.
Okay.
And they talked about also about the space that they call, right now, they're calling it um UFO, which I told them they should change the name of that place. Um, the uh, they're on the corner. They've trying to figure out what to, what to do with that space to make it more appealing. I. Um, I recommend it, highly recommend it, that they make that into an exhibit place. Uh, because it's nice to bring the work that they do in our space downtown area. So.
They love the mirrors on the floor.
Exactly, so they're looking into making sure, right now, it's costly, it's costing them a thousand dollars a month.
Yeah.
So they're looking to see how could they make it profitable, so it doesn't, you know, weigh on their uh, on their finances. But in general, um, they're um moving forward, you know, first floor is already um, you know, occupied. Now people are coming back in. And the studios, I went to see one of the studios, and the child studio looks gorgeous, so, so everybody's happy. That first floor, but there's more work to be done in the next floor.
I did reach out to town council, um, based on some feedback I got. Can't speak to.
Yeah, all right, okay, awesome. All right, perfect. Um, that's it, and I do have a question because I know. I keep bugging you, Megan, regarding this so-called development agreement that we're working on. Is this a good opportunity for me to ask that question? No, I don't know. Okay, that's right, that's what I'm asking, because I don't want you to, you know. Because I did, you did say you were gonna say something tonight, but you didn't.
Oh, you were, you were not there for that portion of the meeting.
That was.
You can't even tell you about it.
Absolutely, that'd be great, okay. I'm sorry. I didn't know, I I I've been reading your data session.
I didn't know, I I I'm reading your interview session, I can see it. Well, you're, okay, all right.
Not a problem.
Awesome, all right, that's it, sorry.
All right, uh, then I will entertain a motion.
The move. Move to a joint.
Say, second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, David?
Yes.
Yes.
Armin?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Good night, everybody.
Nice work, everybody, good night.